Good.
I did. I do. If it's messed up, I can't blame anybody.
You got that sound good? Either that, he was outside and the wind blew it off.
Yeah.
Yeah. What was his name?
Lieutenant Grigus?
Yeah. It's supposed to be for doing this up here, so I tried that out.
I saw that yesterday on television.
He just hold it upon your hand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I tried it out.
I think so.
This is a special.
Yes. It's all right, correct, yeah.
All right, well, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a special meeting of the commissioners. Prior to the regular meeting at nine o'clock, we have one order of business, and that is to discuss some benefits in terms of people that have been rehired to the highway department. And I guess we're gonna let, you've already heard from Mr. Ross, so we'll let others of you speak, and you can add more if you want to, but first thing I want to say is I'm really glad to get you guys back, because they've been a tremendous asset to our highway department. So.
Mr. Sheriff?
Yes.
Before you begin, there's been some discussion that has gone along between last meeting and this meeting, and the auditor's office has been engaged with Mr. Irwin. And I, and the auditor and I have talked and discussed this issue. Before you begin, I, I think maybe, I'm gonna say my part, and I think that Jan has been the contact person with Mr. Irwin on this, on this issue. From, from my standpoint, when, when the memorandum of understanding is done with the deputy sheriff, I I didn't advise against that, only because of the fact that it was a public safety issue, and it was an immediate need. And, and the second point was a definite not, not, a, a definite savings, I mean, approvable savings, of not having to send a new person to the county. And without those conditions, I don't, I don't think the decision would be considered in any circumstance. And I, I think Jan has the input that Mr. Irwin gave her regarding the manner in which it was done, which was in advance of any, in advance of any rehiring. It was bought up before there was any, any rehiring done, so that that was known before there was retiring. And none of those three circumstances applied to here, so I didn't talk to Mr. Irwin myself, so I did.
He did not give him. I love her for that. She had all the information.
He basically said what you just said. Our policy is new rehires are as new employees. The sheriff was a special situation. It did take special training for the sheriff's department, and the sheriff did go through the proper channels. He came to me, then he talked to both Beth and I. He came to the commissioners. And then when it was decided, then he rehired. But and and Kent Irwin said that as it's our policy, we should not hire any. It should remain as is. New hires, or rehires are not, are to be as sorry, I didn't remember what to say here. Rehired are new hired. And he said that we can't just entertain one, one person or one group of kids. Basically, we have to change the whole policy. And that he said that it was not a good idea. That he shouldn't have. She really didn't consider it.
Beth, do you want to add anything to that?
Okay.
Well, having heard that input, any of you want to address this, or come up and mark the poll?
Is there anything to do?
Does it make sense?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you, gentlemen, doing?
All right.
Now, what I gotta say about they, what they said, okay? I understand that there is that policy. Okay? And they're talking about saving money, not training, doing this and doing that. Well, there's a lot of jobs at the county that they gotta train every employee to do. You know, there's patching, you don't think you have to train, but you do. There's dirt patching. And like Zach, the new employee, wonderful kid. He listens, nineteen years old. He's gotta be basically taught everything. So until he learns all that through the people that know, you know, that means it's, it may, might not be as much as what the sheriff did, you know, save, but you still save money, because they didn't have to train me to do nothing. You know, when I got back, the second, third day I got back, I was training people that just started, myself. And I'd only been there three days. You know, they asked Sam how to do that, because I was there thirty-three years. You know? So as far as the saving money, they'll save, might have been the money hiring somebody back. That's my opinion. Second thing, and then be the last thing, no matter whether it's the rule for everybody, that's fine, okay? You got the one rule, no, when you rehire you as a new employee, that's fine. If it's in the rules, that's fine. And when you break it for one, it's broken. It makes no difference why you break it, whether you save money, you save time, you save anything. It's still breaking that rule. And I don't care if you go to this guy, this guy, this guy, this guy. If I didn't know that, I wouldn't have went through, and I don't want to do the same channels. And to me, it's like a school kid. You don't punish one kid for doing something, and let that kid get away with it. You don't reward that kid, you don't even help that kid. You know, so that's what I gotta say. Fair is fair. You know, now, my opinion, rehire is rehire. I agree with that. You should start. That's bottom, just so, you know, just like you should. But when you do it for one, this is the county. Every, the sheriff's department, Carroll Manor, the mess, every employee who works for the county's got the same rules, so they broke it for one. Now, they break it for, then after, like us, then you sit down and say, no more. So when you break it for one, my opinion, you gotta break it for all. So I'm, I'm finished.
Sam, why'd you, why'd you decide to leave the first place?
Reason I left, Miss Daniels got in. And when Miss Daniels got in, I did not know this, in two thousand thirteen, my perp, I worked there thirty-three years, and I couldn't have did it in thirteen. Then thirteen, the perp was eleven percent of my pay that the county donated. In fourteen, it was eight-six. In fifteen, it was seven-six. That's when I found out. Nobody told me. So in in sixteen, it was four-five. Or five-four. In seventeen, it was four-five. He wanted to go clear down to two-five. So even at seven-six, if I'd have waited and went to clear down to four-five, I could not have worked enough hours and enough time to make up what I lost in my perp. So I had to quit. He had already cost me two hundred bucks a month. I really didn't, I'd still be working here for what, for Miss Daniels? I mean, I would have stayed. And then, and I just, you know, but I left because I, I just, there's no way my future I could have made up without quitting.
Now, how long were you away from the county?
I've been away seven years. Now, I'll tell you the truth, the second year, what even second, you might even, let's go to the second, because I'm not sure whether it's first or second year, because I didn't wanna quit. I enjoyed this job. It was a good job. Well, Bill's known me for how many years? I mean, before I even worked.
How hard was school, kid?
Yeah, and I really didn't wanna leave, but two years after I left, I think it was the year after I left, I reapplied. But Paul Coats was, I liked Paul as a guy as a person. But Paul Coats told me, yeah, put you out patiently. So I did, and he hired two or three people, but then, you know, he wouldn't hire me back for simple fact. I'm the type of person, and everybody back here didn't even want me coming up here talking. But I'm the type of person that, I got my opinion. I've done something for twenty-five, thirty years, and somebody comes up, they'll be my boss, and says, we're gonna do this, and he's doing it totally wrong. I would say, Paul, that's wrong. And I mean, I had six, seven people backing me up. But he did not like to be told. So I would have come back, that while Paul Coats, that he would not hire me back. Because he did not like saying it, you know? I mean, I'll give you an example of why you did wrong with them.
I can give the example. You, there was a road over there in your neck of the woods that was paved, and it wasn't done correctly, and you told him it wasn't gonna hold up, and by the next year, it fell apart.
Yeah, that's, there you go. And what, what did this mean? I mean, it was six, seven, eight other guys. Finally, the other guys got to where, hey, it's not gonna do you no good to tell you. I'm not that way. I see somebody gonna waste, you know, eighty thousand bucks of my money. I got, I mean, I wasn't mean or nothing, you know, I would just say. Now Ramsey come in, Ramsey was a wonderful man. He didn't know much. But I'll tell you what, when that man come in, he would listen to you. Say, Ramsey, this, this is what you do. Oh, okay. So, yeah, I would have came back, for those reasons. But Paul wouldn't allow it. And what was, when Paul left, there's a good example. Hunter called me, he said, we need, we need help, Paul Snow. Did I wanna help Paul Snow? That's one of the jobs I didn't care about. You know what? My county needed it, so I said, yeah. Paul wouldn't let me do it, but Kent did. I didn't know Kent real well, I didn't know nothing about him. Except for talking to me, making thirty minutes, but, yeah, I would have got back, I would have come back to this job, because I'm enjoying it.
Thanks, man.
You're welcome. My wife will be proud of you.
Could the speaker be, uh?
Introduced?
Introduced, yeah. Or just say what his name, for the record.
Sam Smith.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Matthew Wade McInich.
Oh, my God.
Two Ts and Matthews, and then I'll help you out.
Okay, go.
Good morning.
M.C., capital A.N.I.M.C.H.
Thank you.
Good morning. This news came late to me about this deal. I guess all I got to say was, I was an employee for several years in good standing. I got deathly ill. I had to go on disability and stuff for a while, the office girls know that. If I, if I wouldn't have got deathly ill, I wouldn't have left. But then it got to be where I just wasn't safe to be in the motor in public and go on, so I had to bail. Less than a year later, I came back to the county because, you know, I was gonna have Hunter see if I could do some North Towns and a little ton for us. You know, and he's like, man, wait, we're down staffed, you know, we'd like to have you back full time. You're a good worker, and you know things we do, and so I told him, we had talked about it. I ended up coming back. Then I heard about this kind of stuff, and I thought, well, you know, if it falls in my lap, I'll accept it. So that's why I'm here, man.
Do you have a question for him?
No. Have free time.
Frank, you coming up?
Hi.
Tell her your name, Frank.
Uh, Frank Welch, B.E.L.C.H.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess I agree with most of those guys there. About two and a half years ago, Kent's administration, I was wrote up. I went to the doctor, the doctor gave me a doctor's keys, and made a clerical error, okay? Um, I accepted a write-up, but it was not given to me by Kent. It was given to me by Bob Lowery. Now, I don't feel that it was right. I think Kent should have been the one giving that to me. He never did. He wrote me up again for the third time, or second time, with three days' suspension. So on the third day of the suspension, I resigned my position, because the man never talked to me. He never said a word. So I feel that I kinda deserved my time back, if I can get back. But I did, I did obviously quit. I did obviously resign, so therefore, I, I don't know. But I guess, like, good for one, good for another, so I guess that's about all I got to say.
How long was you out?
Uh, about two and a half years. Then Scott got ahold of me, uh, to run the highway garage, because obviously they have set. So now we're gonna try to back to the Ramsey and Francis, the way they had. And that's my ultimate goal, to get back there.
You back in the garage?
Uh, I'm in the garage now, to put it back the way Ramsey and Francis had the system running. I guess that's about it. That's something you get nervous. I haven't spoken in public for a long time.
You had your own shop.
Yeah, still do. But I'd rather stay at the county and use that for part-time. Yeah, Frank's automotive.
So you turned in full-time when you left the county?
Yes, I did. At that particular time, it was a decision I made.
You're full-time at one time, is that true?
Yeah, uh-huh, but I'd rather be at the county, because I like it better. But, and I could just run that half, half the time. It's just as easy.
Or less headaches.
Very less headaches, yeah. I can do bread jobs instead of Indian jobs. But for the most part, at that time, when I left, everything was financially secure, everything's fine. It still are, still is. So I just had to move buildings, is all, because they sold my building. But I leased another one, I should have my sign backed up by the end of the week, so. But I guess that's where we're at.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, too.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good morning. Your name's what is it?
My name's Sean.
Hi, Sean.
S.H.A.W.N.
You have to say it loud enough so I can hear you. Yeah, because it's really.
Sean, S.H.A.W.N.
It's really a public thing.
And last name Kei, K.E.I.H.N.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I was, I was here for about a year, and I was under the Paul, Paul Coats administration, and I worked here, and then I got an opportunity to go to the state of Indiana, to learn more about my trade and everything. And Hunter got back, Hunter and a couple other guys got ahold of me and said, hey, we need help. He was a good worker, we need experience, we'd like for you to come back. So I, in turn, left the good position I had at the state. And I came back to work for the county and never looked back. I know I've, I've only been here a year, and I've been gone for a year, and then I'm back. These guys back here, they're, they're the backbone of the company. And I think if one person gets it, they all should. There's a thin line there. I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know, because if you go over to a I don't know, but I don't really wanna say that discrimination thing to police. I understand, police officer, there's the expert training and everything, but like Sam said, we all have training. They carry a gun, we work on the highways. We risk our lives with these people driving up and down the road about hitting us. And I think we all work together. I think that in the future, that once, whatever you gentlemen decide, that there should be a rule from then on. And don't back down from that, you know, make it official, update it, whatever you have to do. But in the long run, it did happen, and they all asked me about it, and I said, well, you know, I'll give it a shot. There's nothing wrong with giving it a shot to see what happens, so. And I stepped down from my podium. Do you guys have any questions for me?
You ever ask me?
No. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Sean.
Mr. Ross, are you gonna speak again?
Yeah, I, I got a couple of things I wanna
I'm watching it.
Troy Rossiter.
I got that, yeah.
Okay.
Got that last time.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's my understanding, this was in previous, had been, had previously been done with Mary Ann Burton and Diane Kelly. They had left the county. One of them, I think, was for perf reasons, and then came back, and their, when they came back, their time after a while was recognized again. And that's my understanding. And I don't know, you'd have to go back to the have to go back to the minutes and see how that turned out, but and I think we're part of public safety, too, yes. I understand we don't carry a gun, but we're out there, you know, following snow, and nobody else is out. We're, we're going to get the dispatchers to take them in and people, you know, so I, I I know it's not comparing apples to apples, but I, I, I think we're termed first responders in the, in the in the book. I mean, that's, but I think we're, we're part of the public safety. Also, so. And then you guys have already heard my side of why I left, so.
How long did you work for, before you left for your purpose?
I worked like two, two years and nine months, or something like that, wasn't it? Yeah, two years and nine months. And actually, when I left for the, I left, I worked there twenty-nine years and nine months. I was three months short of my thirty years of service. And then when I turned fifty-five, last year, then I met the maximum benefit, which is an eighty-five point, you max out, so I decided I wanted to take that one. Which, if you don't take it, it sets there, it's not it's not invested or anything like that, so. But that was my, my case, but anyway, thank you for your time.
If you'd be willing to come in.
I could add something.
Sure.
Can you tell your name? Scott, Scott, that's the same. And I just wanna reiterate that, I know we don't send them off to school and pay for it, but while they're getting trained, whatever, they, they ride with, with another guy. So they're actually getting paid, that's like they're training, so they're getting paid to ride with somebody, where when you bring bad guys that knows what they're doing, you don't have to do that. You can just try to lose. And they did come back, because, main reason is because we were down guys, we needed help following snow, because it just, it'd take everybody longer, because we still have eighteen dancers to cover. No matter if there's eighteen guys there or five. So in retrospect, it, they would have to, those five would have to stay longer to get, to cover it, and and then if we got more guys, it doesn't take as long, which just been in the same, same overtime. I just wanted to add that.
There was one question I was about to ask. Vacation time, that's what you're after. And Troy, yours was what, five days?
I was at
Possibly.
I was at ten when I left.
You was at ten, so you came back with the five, and then you Sean?
I just had five.
Just, just the original five?
Original five.
Frank?
I think I would have been up to three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah, it was like eight years. I spent a total of seventeen years there.
I think I, does it match?
I had two weeks, and I was getting ready to gain my third week this year. The end of this year. Sam?
Four. I have got that four. Had four weeks for a lot of years.
So it's vacation time, that's what we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Completely.
With my, with the senior.
And your position in the truck swap, as far as better vehicles, I guess you might, you know, because you do that on time. Your longevity gives you a better piece of equipment to plow snow in.
Now, I understood Irwin, right, who needs a gentleman to resign on their own, and got paid off their vacation time?
Yeah, we got, what, vacation time, they had not taken, and they're approved vacant, approved vacation.
So it's not like you guys were not paid for, I understand, you just want that. You'd like to have those extra weeks or days back. Would you like your guys' opinion, okay, but you just want, so what else?
Well, as we're, I guess after we were here one year, like, I, I came back October the third.
Right.
And once October the third comes again this year, I would just like my time that I previously worked to be recognized, so basically add one year plus my previous time, two years and nine months together, I guess, is what. And that just gets me back to my vacation. That's, that's what I look at.
Now, Ted, when we did it for the sheriff in Martin County, he had to agree to, what, work one year, wasn't it? Or two years?
And then, you know, it, it can't be a binding obligation.
Right, I remember that.
So it's, uh, it was one year, I think. Two, is it two? Two years.
So even if it's not a legally binding situation, it can be a gentleman's theory, compared that they're gonna be here at least two years if you're to do this. Like, I mean, I know most of you guys are made out, I know all of them, so.
Right, right.
I mean, uh,
The officer signed a memorandum of understanding.
Wait, say that again, Ben.
He's signed a memorandum of understanding. There had to be a paperwork some, of some kind. And you can't, I'm always looking into that part, too, so.
Yeah, you guys asked me if I was interested in, I think Steve did. If I, if I would be interested in signing, you know, I'm like, yeah, I have no problem.
And we find out it's really not legal binding.
But, you know, I guess it's a gentleman's handshake on paper, I guess you wanna call it that.
Right. Well, I'm not sure if we're gonna make a decision today. We don't know when we're gonna do this. If we do it, there's no promise, you guys, but it's just a lot of, I wanted to hear your guys' story, why you left, why you came back. For my personal stuff, um, I think, same for my colleagues here. But I, I won't make a decision today, but there, there's a lot to, to go through. Because it messes up with the paperwork, and there's a lot of But there's, there's a lot to, to go through, because it messes up with the paperwork, and there's a lot of-
Want to interrupt, but we would have to figure out the approved time that they got paid out for, because they can't have that money back, what they've been paid for.
Okay, Sam. If, if, the one thing we're talking about, though, is when they're ready for the next vacation, that doesn't really enter it, does it?
Well, yes, it does, because that's the time that they earn, like, take example, the first year, they're earning vacation time each day that they're here.
Right.
So, when they've been here a year, and they decide to leave six months after their first, they decide to leave a month and a half, they get paid the one week vacation time, if they have not taken it, plus they will get paid for vacation time they have earned in that six months. So, that would factor in to what, I mean, if they wanted to go back to get their time, I mean, they didn't pay out for what had been earned.
But after so long-
I mean, I'd have to sit down and figure for each one of them as far as-
Irwin?
I'm gonna have to argue with Jan on that, because I understand what she's saying, but they were, they were paid for their accrued vacation time when you leave, so they're back at zero. But we're not talking about paying them, going back and paying them for vacation they've already paid for. And they start a new year when they come back. So, all they're asking for is when they start a new year, and their one-year anniversary comes up, that their previous years of experience are recognized. So, instead of, in Troy's case, he worked for two and a half, almost three years, and when he left, he was paid for his vacation. One week, he was still at a one week, well, when he left, he was at two weeks, ten days. And that was paid. So, when, when he came back, and the new twelve months go by, that you, he was paid at the, at the ten-day or two-week vacation rate, and not the old, the original five days. So, I don't think there's gonna be any calculating to be done, because that vacation was paid and it's over with. They're starting a new one-year anniversary where they earn, and it's, it's, the question is, at what rate are they earning the vacation? Are they earning it at the original hiree, five days for one year? Or are they earning it at the rate they were earning it when they left? So, there's not gonna be any calculation. After one year, the question is, after one year, will he earn two weeks, or will he earn one week? Or will he earn three weeks, or four weeks of same period? That's the question.
So, like Sam, you, how she's explaining it, then, when you get to one year back, that's when you'd be looking at your four weeks, right?
Exactly. I, I hired on January third. So, on January third, that's my week, and so I will keep my, back what I had. So, it'll be only three weeks, because I earned one back. So, it'll only be three weeks, as of this year. Yeah.
Well, I certainly recognize that vacations are important. I know we always used to laugh when I was a teacher, that there were three reasons that you became a teacher. That's June, July, and August. But, um, I'm thinking, maybe we ought to really look at our policy, see what we think. I, I agree with what Sam said, is that we ought to, when you're, we've done it once, and Mr. Rossiter, Troy says that maybe we've done it four. I don't remember that, but that hasn't, whether I remember it or not does mean that you're gospel. I think some of the, not going through proper channels was, we followed the engineer at the head at that time. He didn't come to us with that back then. I, I totally respect greatly your opinions and the opinion of, of the, of our, of-
I'd like to back up there. That's not our opinion. That's what Gabriel likes to say.
Ken Irwin's opinion, and certainly Ted's. I, I couldn't get by without Ted's opinions. But, um, Steve said we're not gonna make a decision today, so.
I won't. I mean, if you guys want to make a decision.
Well, I can tell you that my vote's gonna be, I, I came into this job wanting to improve the roads, improve life for the people in the county. I wanted to improve the Carroll Manor. And I certainly didn't, I, I want to improve the life of the people who work here. And, yeah, I, I, I'm in favor of giving them this time. Well, I heard Sam speak.
And one thing I really stuck out, he said we made a mistake. And I agree with that. We need, we did make a mistake. Now, I see that. You pointed that out. We, we didn't honor our policy, okay? But there is exceptions in that, for something like that. And we had, we had the need, but are we gonna keep making mistakes? I mean, we, we have a job to do here, too. And we got a policy to follow. If you want to study policies, learn, study, see what it says. We got recommendations from the people who work there, actually.
Sure, Sam.
But, Lauren, I've known you all the time, too.
Yeah, you sure have. I think a lot of you have.
Yeah, but that's, you already made the mistake, so after this mistake, and it's a mistake, it's going against the policy. Then after this today, then no more. There's no exceptions. There's nothing that can get by that policy. So, that, that's where you-
Well, this, this is a little difficult, because the sheriff comes to us before, before he did it. You were hired back. You'll get explained, though, it's nothing. Now you're gonna have to. You come in under the terms, and you come in under-
I agree with that.
I mean, I, I don't want a job, I don't want to lose any of it.
Right.
We have a job here to do. Well, see, that was my understanding when I went back to Kent, and he hired me back. He, he, when I left, he said, "If it doesn't work out, come back." Well, when I went and talked to him, I told him that. I said, "Hey, can you go to back for me on Sunday?" And he said, "It's your thing. I'll do that."
That's why he's not here to do it.
And he never did. So, I went through the proper channels, and it, it didn't work. And I'm starting to learn that the proper channels sometimes maybe aren't the best.
Well, if there's paperwork to back that up, I mean, that's a different story, but do you have paperwork to have?
I didn't really think I had to have paperwork.
I think what she's trying to say is, did you ask before you were hired? That's what the policy is. Before you're hired, you are supposed to ask.
I asked him when I sat down. I said, "If I come back," I said, "I'd like to come back." Kent said, "Okay, that's great. We'd love to have you back." I said, "Hey, can you do me a favor?"
I thought that's what she had said.
Yeah, "Can you do me a favor?" He says, "I'll go to back for you, Troy." I said, "Okay, thank you." Nothing happened.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't have the incompetence of one leader, that he should have said that, "Hey, I'm bringing you guys back. I'm gonna go back for you." And with his incompetence, drop the ball.
Did all of you ask that? Sean, did you ask that?
I, I asked him. He said, "Yes, I will check into it." And I don't know about the other guys here.
But did, but was it put in place before you actually said, "Yes, I'll take it"? There's a difference there.
Well, yeah, I agree, but if we look at it in another point of view, he said that, and he offered the job same time, because we were so short personnel going, going in. Because I started a year ago February, and he was so dire need of bodies, I'll put it that way, into there, he just went ahead and, I think he was saying, I don't know if he's saying whatever he wanted to say to make us happy to come back. But whatever you decide, it's, we can play this, what if, here this, whatever this, back and forth, until we're boot interface. The thing about it is, is some of us were loaded back by false pretenses. But at, at the end of the day, it's your decision. I might consider and keep carrying on about it. I just say, "You're gonna punish us for somebody's incompetence, because they didn't do it."
So, Sam, if you didn't get your whole four weeks back, would you still be satisfied with something?
I'll tell you what, Steve, I, I would be satisfied. I would, you know? No problem, because I, I, nobody said anything to me about it. I never really thought about it.
Well, you was the one that was out the longest. That's why I'm not-
Yeah, yeah. And, and no, I, I would be satisfied, you know? If I didn't get it, it wouldn't, I'm still gonna keep the job, because I like it. I enjoy it. I like working for these people.
Well, I think, I, I agree with Bill here. I also agree with Lauren. Um, I think we need to change our policies for rehires. If you left on good standings, and you left the proper way, and you did all the jump jumping, maybe you get something back.
Something back, or just go-
You may not get it all back, but maybe something, but-
Or just go just completely, you don't, you, you start a rehire, either way.
Right.
But you gotta make it clear, and you gotta keep doing it the same place for everybody. It sounds like these two guys, you know, the, Kent said he's gonna go back, and that just, just didn't do it. So, me, he never told me that, because I just, you know, they asked me to hire in, and I wanted to come back. And all that, as I said, I'd come back, you know, because I like, I like being here. And if I don't get it, oh, I ain't gonna matter, you know? It's just simple fact that you do the one, you do the- Yeah, that, that's mine. And they had to do what they had to do, and I didn't know that.
Beth?
I wasn't gonna say anything, because actually, Jan's been doing this during most of the discussions, but what Sam said, stop it after them, that is the most, that is unfair, and that's discriminatory. And you cannot do that. I mean, we're HR. If someone comes in and they want their time back, and they're not hired yet, we would tell them to go to their department head and tell them exactly what they need to do. You have, you do have a lot of people here that might come back, or have come back. It's gonna open, we're going to have to check all those people out. It's not just the highway. That's, we've got to be fair. So, you can't just say, "After us, start over."
Yeah. Well, see, that just, while, while I was meaning to keep it one way or the other.
Well, yeah, but after you got your benefit, see? I mean, that's what they're gonna say.
But while, while I, while I admit like that, that's what-
I, I know.
Okay, I mean, I know.
No, and I'm not either. I'm just saying, the next person that comes in, they're gonna say the same thing. You know, that's, that's where I was going with that, Sammy. I've known you forever, so.
That's why, that's why we, I think, we need to look at that policy.
And I will say that we have contacted Kent, and I want to do just that. So, not just on this policy, but some, several other things.
I think that there's definitely a reason that we should look at the policy and, and try to decide what we want to do. I, I think if somebody leaves in good standing, that they should be able to come back and be treated like they left in good standing. I, I mean, Sam just expressed it for me there, and he said, you know, he likes the job. He's gonna be here no matter what. That's the kind of person that we want. I'm looking at five guys out here that I'm really glad are back with the department. And I know that they're gonna do the right job for the people of Carroll County. And they appreciate their position they have now, and I want to know that we appreciate it. And so, that's why that I am in favor of them. Now, Steve, when, when would you like to make this decision? Because we need to, we need to decide, I think.
Yeah, next meeting.
Next meeting? Okay. Is that fair to you guys?
Yeah.
The next meeting? Okay, can we put this on the agenda for the next meeting? Okay?
Got it.
And with that, I think we're gonna, we've run over time here, so I'm going to just switch over to the regular meeting. And I would, if you guys want to leave, you can, but you're welcome to stay, but we want to, want to, I want to invite everybody to join in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you. Be safe out there, gentlemen.
Yeah, I would respect your all the time.
Okay, with that, the first thing we have to do is the approval of the minutes from March. You're gonna do both of the minutes, same time?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve both minutes as presented.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the March twentieth regular meeting and the March twentieth executive session. All that favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Let's go. I have it in here. I'm gonna say it right. And now, we have the following claims.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve all claims as presented. One second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. All that favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. All claims are seen. Highway, we are ready. Ready for you, Scott.
Can we, uh, put Mr.? Just to get back up to the man, James Smith, remember him?
We can. We can.
Hurry, please, and thank you.